All right, we'll co-order Regular Business Team and Board of Education for Monday, June 27. To order, I'd like everybody to stand beside the Pledge of Allegiance. We're here to your left. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, start with the roll call.
Stephen Arthur.
Here.
Jim Bassin.
Here.
Alex Darley-Polly.
Here.
Pat Gertie.
Here.
Scott Booth.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Maurer.
Here.
Okay, so everybody's present tonight. Our agenda, we will have a brief public hearing, authorizing the transfer of funds from the Transportation Fund to O&M Fund. Brief superintendent's report, a few minor comments from me. We'll invite the public to speak. Approved consent voter agenda, which was reviewed earlier this evening. Brief update from program and personnel and FNF also done earlier this evening. No property here. Steven. Little CNO? Okay. IASP?
Maybe this is...
Yeah, that's fine. All right, so a couple on each of those, and then that should be it.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's declare the public hearing on resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the Transportation Fund, the O&M Fund, open. I'll pass it over to...
This evening, we are presenting you with a resolution which would authorize the transfer of funds from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund to address some upcoming capital project needs. We will say that our request is for $8 million. This is a transfer that is permitted by the Illinois School Code. And this transfer would be effective as of June 30, 2016, so it will be reflected in this fiscal year. We will make the appropriate changes should you approve it to reflect it in the fund balance. Once this transfer has been made, it will be assigned a restricted label, basically meaning that the funds can only be used for large capital projects, projects that would have been approved by you. And when funding those projects, we will identify as to how much money is coming from this particular transfer. Over the years, the amount in the transportation has accumulated as we were looking at one time to address the fact that we were not getting satisfactory bids for our transportation services. We were struggling basically to find even a company to come and submit a bid. Purpose of accumulating those funds was to perhaps open our own garage and provide our own buses. Over the past four or five years, we've had established good relationship with the Wake Site Transportation Company. In fact, Wednesday, I'm meeting with them once again to see if we can extend it beyond a one-year period so that we have two- or three-year agreement with them in place. Knowing that, we feel pretty comfortable coming to you tonight and asking for this transfer. What the School Code requires is that we publish a notice in the newspaper, letting citizens of this community know that this transfer is going to take place tonight, that they have an opportunity to come here and provide testimony should they choose to do so. And the testimony would be done through a public hearing process, which is currently ongoing, which is what we're doing right now. So I'll turn it back to you, partner.
Yes, just two additional points here. First, on the bus transportation, like we do with many services, we work with three of our four feeder districts.
Correct.
On our bus arrangements.
Correct.
So we're trying to leverage economy of scale.
Correct.
In terms of doing that, that's important, I think, you know, for the board to remember and the public to know. And the second thing is that through our budget discussions over the last few years, we have collectively identified the Transportation Fund, the resource of the Transportation Fund, as resources that could be better reallocated than sitting in a fund account that we are not using that amount of money. So I just wanted to make that point.
And the emphasis, this is allowed by the School Code.
Right, and this is consistent with our, you know, kind of our budget dig-in that we do every year with the board. So, Pat.
Okay. Any public comments regarding the authorization to transfer funds from the Transportation Fund to the O&M Fund? Nope? Okay, I declare the public...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure. Yeah.
If we do this now, does this prohibit us from doing this again in the future?
The current law that is in place is set to expire on June 30, 2016. However, there is an extension of this to 2019, which currently awaits governor's signature. So as soon as it is signed, or 30 days passed, that will become the law. So it will be extended to 2019, and you can do it again.
And so we're asking to move how much again?
Eight million dollars.
Eight million?
Yes.
Okay.
We had like 12 or something in.
10.6.
It's 10.6.
For a while, maybe 12.
It's an extension of this year. We don't want to move all of it right now, Stephen, because if we do that, and then the state has some issues, you know, we're down to like 700,000 if we do 10 million. And depending on what happens with the state, that might not get us through the...
No, I thought I heard 1 million when we opened it up, and I was like, whoa!
So let's...
So it's basically leaving enough for one year's operation of the transportation.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so I declare the hearing close.
Thank you.
Does that actually come up for a vote if we get...
Yes, it does.
Later on in FNF?
It is under FNF.
FNF, right. Okay. All right. Let's see. Number three. President's report. Only thing I want to say is thanks to everybody that was involved in the year-end activities. Both graduations are awesome. And, yeah, great job, Scott Booth, that's right. I heard some very positive comments about your works, and the pictures on the website are awesome too. All right, so thanks, everybody. Thank you for all the participation. Super test report.
Okay, shorter than it has been for probably 10 months, which is a good thing for probably everyone here. But we do want to share the good news tonight from our students and staff. The following VHS students were named recipients of the May Cougar Class Act Awards. Tatiana Lechaki, Rose Farolo, Carly Stern, Serena Panos, Nina Weisblatt, Michelle Hernandez, Eka, Mamila Shabili, Erin Castellanos, Samantha Hiscott, Athena Cook, Madison Brenahan, Rena Roos, Jacob Stern, Jeffrey Rosenstock, L'Oreal Mabang, James Holloway, Sidney Kaufman, Idia Powell, Oliver Liam, Kyle Proczowski, Hida Ahmed, Molly Westerberg, and Alexis Reich. So congratulations to them. LHS junior Laura Zing has qualified to compete in rhythmic gymnastics at the 2016 Rio Olympic Games. So we'll all be following Laura as she makes her journey down there. She had a phenomenal season this year, and her last few competitions really took her to the top, so that's really exciting. LHS 2012 graduate Nina Andrew Avich was recently honored by Cornell University as a Merrill Presidential Scholar. Only the top 1% of graduates earn this honor. Nina was selected for her academic performance, national championships in math modeling competitions, her research in catalysts for fuel cells, and her work as an undergraduate teaching assistant. Anna Reeves invited a former teacher to join them at the 28th Annual Merrill Presidential Scholar Promotion Luncheon Ceremony, and Nina chose her LHS AP Physics teacher, Mark Busing. Nina wrote, "His clarity and enthusiasm in teaching helped me understand and appreciate physics early on, and have fueled my love of physics ever since." Nina and her twin sister, Yovana, are graduating from Cornell with degrees in engineering, physics, and minors in applied mathematics. Nina is attending MIT for graduate school, and Yovana is attending Harvard. MIT and Harvard. Congratulations, Nina, Yovana, and Mr. Busing. LHS sophomore or German II honors student Martin Braneman and VHS sophomore Spanish III student Kelsey Carrito were recipients of $5,000 scholarships to study abroad through the Experiment in International Living. This summer, they will participate in a month-long program in Germany. The Experiment in International Living provides summer abroad programs for high school students who want to connect and engage with the richness and complexities of other countries. The VHS May 2016 You Make a Difference Awards were held during awards breakfast on May 24. Recipients were nominated by their VHS colleagues for this honor that is given to staff members who go above and beyond to help students improve the climate at VHS and take the extra step to support their colleagues. Award recipients for May 2016 were Deanne Fernbach, Judy Stone, Vi Butler, Shaban Zago, Cheryl Stephens, Kelly Garrison, Ruth Netlin, Ronnie Alshaus, Tina Loungesbury, Amy Christian, the LST, Scott Bourbon, and School Resource Officer Becky Foit. 61 to 8 students were accepted to this year's highly selective Ragsdale's Summer High School Arts Week Program. VHS students Cindy Eurostoghi and Drew Laser, along with LHS students Alice Lilydahl, Monica Martin, and Taylor Sloan, will attend next month's all-expenses-paid opportunity for visual arts, performing arts, and writing students to create work with like-minded students at this nonprofit artist community. During this week-long program, students will work with distinguished instructors within their area of interest. Annually, Ragsdale hosts 200 visual artists, writers, composers, and interdisciplinary artists at all stages of their careers for 18- to 25-day residencies, making it one of the largest artist communities in the country. And finally, the LHS debate team achieved a 3.8 total cumulative grade point average during the 2015-16 season, qualifying the team for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Award. So congratulations to them. So even in the summer, great news at 128. Number two in the superintendent's report is just a very brief major capital projects update. Yes, I'm assuming you'll do a little bit of update on the construction manager during the FNF report, or maybe we'll learn to touch on that here and then, since we're talking about those both together. The major capital projects updates, over this last probably three to four months, we've gone through a process of presentations to the board on the major capital projects that we have been discussing for really several years, and over the past year, much more seriously and in a much more focused way. Again, those projects are a new swimming pool at Vernon Hills High School, a second gym at Vernon Hills High School...
Libertyville.
Oh, I'm sorry. New swimming pool at Libertyville High School. Okay, let me see. A new pool at Libertyville High School, a second gym at Vernon Hills High School.
We're bringing in the resuscitate here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some of our audience is like... Resuscitate.
And those...
We're going to say AED.
Yeah, and so don't tell Steve I said that. Tell Steve I said that as a joke, Steve Mitchell. So those are the two, those are the two major projects. The third project is, once the new pool at Libertyville would be completed, would be to repurpose the old pool, recoup that space within the building at Libertyville High School, and, you know, we'll have a further plan to do that. And really, the fourth part of this is more of a property part, and that is to continue to work at procuring property across the street, 176 from Libertyville High School, where we now own one property that's a double lot. We've taken the old house down there, and we about, I don't know, a year ago now, almost, purchased a second property over there. Rick will be happy to know we did do the extension earlier. We're going to vote on that tonight. But as soon as the folks that we bought that property from are done with some storage extension needs that they had there, then we'll be back to the board to take that house down. As part of this project, teams from LaRiva High School and Vernon Hills High School, as well as our architect and outside consultants, did a number of months of work on looking at options for both the swimming pool at LaRiva High School and the second gym at Vernon Hills High School. They made proposals, they made presentations to the board where I've covered rationale for the projects, options that would meet our needs, some comparative data between the differences between those options, and made recommendations to the board at this point. As always, we want to point out to the public right now that the board has not made a final decision or a final determination, but we move forward with the next phase of this process, and that is to procure a construction manager for those projects that can work with our architects and other professional staff, as well as our team members and Mark within the district to move those projects forward. Once we have the construction manager in place, we hope to be making recommendation within probably a month. Once we have the construction manager in place, then our architects will do more definitive, define detail on the two projects, will review those projects and the options that we believe we were looking at at the beginning, and the board approved with us moving forward, take a second look at those in relation to our overall financial planning, and then we'll be in a position to make some decisions to move forward. Again, as review, we have roughly $88 to $90 million in our reserves at this point. We want to make clear that those projects would, if they go forward, would be paid from reserves. The board would look at all options, including the bond market right now because interest rates are so low. It could be a combination of things, but the board will not go to the taxpayers and ask the taxpayers for additional dollars for the project. So I think that's a quick summary. Alex and Ellen Maurer on the board have been working with Yaz and the team here in terms of assessing and interviewing construction management firms. They're doing some more detailed work on that, and then again, in a month or so, I'll be back to the board with a recommendation for them to look at with that. With that said, I think that's our major capital projects update at this point. Any comments or questions from the board? That's all makes sense, all line up with what we've done? Okay, good. And Pat, I don't have anything under other tonight, so...
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
A question with regard to...
Would you just need your name and address for the record?
Sorry. Jerry Verbatim, 319 Carriage Hill Circle, Libertyville, Illinois.
Excellent.
You know, a year, a year and a half ago, we spent some time talking to each other about some of the projects, and one of the projects, the gym, I'm sorry, let's talk the pool first. And at that time, when we were talking, there were some other people with me at the time, the approximation was about $11 million for the pool. What is it now?
So actually, I think it was higher. I think the numbers I recall were in the 12 to 16 million dollar range. I think it's currently 19, including the site work that had to be done because we have to redo the road and some other things.
And in the, in the year, why has that gone up that much?
A lot of it was the site work. So, and we benchmarked the pool project that we're doing to other pools that have been down in the area. Buffalo Grove comes to mind. And the cost of the pool itself, if I recall, was in the same neighborhood as that pool, but with the additional site work, because we have to relocate a road and do some other site work. That was the big driver, the incremental cost.
Wasn't that part of the original two at that time? No. Well, were we going to put it there? I mean, at the time, you were talking about... We were still looking at... Closing off the pool area and building a dance hall, or dance floor.
And that's still on the table.
So where was the new pool going to go?
We were looking at various sites on the back and the front of the building.
And they would have not had the same problems as far as the cost?
When we looked at doing the back of the building, we would have had to relocate the whole chillow plant, which would have driven that cost up considerably.
Plus, is it out of floodwater? Like, to build there would be...
Have to be elevated.
Now, has this been publicized in the newspaper, exactly the cost associated with the pool and the plans?
I'm pretty sure the pool was, if I recall.
Russell's.
I don't recall exactly, but I thought, I thought actually the day we met on the pool, that was published, but I don't honestly recall.
Well, is Lesur here, the guy who covers the publication for the Daily Herald?
It's not mine.
He pardon me?
Russell.
It's not yours tonight.
He understands that. Secondly, justifications for the gymnasium. Why? It was, that building was built for 1,330 students, right? 1,300, yeah, 1,330 students. What's the current enrollment?
About the same. Projected to grow, but it's about the same today.
I thought it was 1,300. What is it, Jasmine, as far as enrollment?
I believe it's very close, and, you know, every year we have the...
Okay, all right. So suffice it to say, though, there was a detailed presentation made, I believe it was the last board meeting?
Yes.
I was hoping for that. Okay, I mean, we can make that available to you if you want to see it.
Well, I'd like to see the newspaper.
Well, I can't control the newspaper.
It's on the website, on a video.
Let's go to the newspaper.
It was the video in the newspaper.
All people read the website and everything else?
February 5th, it was...
I don't think, I don't think the newspaper is doing justice to the taxpayers to legitimately publicize what the heck is going on here.
So again, the February 5th meeting, was it the edition of the Herald on the 5th, or the meeting was on the 5th?
It was the edition of the Herald.
Okay, so in the Herald, the pool was published on February 5th.
With cost, with plans?
I believe it talked about the $19 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay. But the, to my knowledge, we haven't seen a publication on the gym. But maybe more.
You know, people ask me, I'm dealing in a building that's, what, 15 years old?
Vernon Hills?
Yeah.
15?
Why do we need a new gym already?
Isn't it part of the original?
It's a second, we're not going to...
Part of the original plan?
Yeah. It was value engineering.
Yeah, we can show, we can show the scheduling stuff that you guys did. There was detailed scheduling information provided. There's no sense in just hashing through it in form, and we have a detailed presentation to show it. You're welcome.
Another question.
We can post that, too.
I heard, I heard the surplus to be anywhere between 80 and 95 million. Here we go. Last year, when we sat here, it was 125 million. What happened between last year and now that it's gone down?
We paid, we paid the bills that we told you we were going to have to pay. So can I just ask a point of clarification? The numbers in the package show $97 million?
Yes.
Have we received any early taxes in there, or is that essentially as low as we go?
That was the May report that you saw. The June report has, I have it in front of me.
Yeah, but this one here, essentially at the end of May is as low as we go.
Yes.
So that 97 is a pretty accurate, well, you still have to pay your bills in the month of June.
Right.
Okay, which is on the order of probably about $7 million.
June is a relatively heavy month, so it's about $11 million.
Okay, so you take 97 minus 11, and you get...
There you go, 86 million dollars.
All right, so again, fund balances at the end of May, $97 million. Out of that money, we still owe June expenses roughly, call it $10 million, if you can. Okay, that takes us down to $87 million, which is what we have argued repeatedly was about our fund balance, regardless of what you've read in the newspaper. Okay, because the newspaper takes the fund balance in any given meeting and says, that's the fund, that's the surplus. And they always forget to report that we still have nine, six, three months, whatever number of months of bills to still pay out of the money we've already received from the taxpayer.
But don't you get a check in June now from the government, or from the state?
Right, we do.
How much?
The state of Illinois pays us very little, if it is about 200,000 for a general state aid, that is on the high side.
Where comes the property tax?
The property taxes are in June.
June?
Yes.
What will it be when the property tax come in?
We have received all the property taxes we are going to for this year, and we have received about $36 million in property taxes.
So we have to pay our bills next year out of this.
I understand. What's your budget this year?
My budget is going to be...
We have a budget determined.
This year it isn't. Fiscal year '16 is $88 million.
88, and how much is that up from last year?
Offhand, I don't have fiscal year '15 numbers here.
So you can compare last year?
I do for the board, but I don't have it in front of me.
She's referring to the '16 budget. We will be reviewing the '17 budget next month.
Then you count last, what, your budget last year about 77 million?
It depends on what you're including in it, sir, but we also have a substantial bond and interest payment that perhaps you did not include. I don't know where you're getting your numbers from, but it is 88 million.
All right, 88 million. And what is your total headcount in both schools?
Okay, we're not going to get into this level of detail in the public comment section. All right, I'm just going to cut it off right here. All right?
When, Pat, can the taxpayers totally understand?
We will be reviewing the budget. The schedule will be published here. More than happy to review it in whatever detail you would like, just as we have in the past. All right, but I don't want to do that in just the public comment part of the meeting.
Can we, can we...
Because we're not prepared, we're not prepared tonight to give you specifics, and I don't want anybody answering if they don't have paper in front of them that says, these are the numbers, okay? All right, but we're more than happy to do it, and we'll take as long as we need to. I mean, the July 18th meeting is an open meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the meeting where this board will actually review in detail the budget, okay? I think we're going to approve a working budget tonight, but let me just say right now, we have not reviewed in detail the working budget.
We've reviewed.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. The approval of the working budget tonight is simply to allow the school district to keep going. We will review the budget for next year in detail on July 8th to Monday night. And more than welcome to participate in that discussion.
My only concern is that the taxes went up this year considerably for District 128.
Just out of curiosity, because I know you said approximately percentage-wise, do you recall where this went up?
Mine went up 201 bucks.
Okay, all right. Because mine went up almost 3%.
How much?
About 3%.
And how much is that?
About 3%. More than 200.
Okay, but there's a lot of people that had that same issue and are looking around saying, jeez, we got this article in the newspaper that says, holy man, we got 100 non, whatever you want to call it, to be surplus, and the abatements and all this, what's happening?
So, and again, in a nutshell, here's what I need you to tell your neighbors, okay? We gave back over $15 million over the last three years.
Uh-huh.
We gave back last year more than last year's fair share. Okay, so if you look at the bond and interest that we paid last year, all right, so we had bond and interest, we still owed on all the buildings. We didn't take a dime for what we owed last year. Okay, we paid it out of surplus.
But in the process the taxpayers are paying, how much more is ours?
Hang on one second. I'm talking about last year, all right? So last year, we didn't take a dime for bond and interest, and we gave you back even some more, or we didn't take even some more to the tune of...
2.9 million.
How much did you make?
2.9, okay. It was about 5 plus the 2.9, it was about 8 or 9 million dollars. Okay, so imagine we could have raised taxes about $9 million more last year than we did. Okay, that was for the year just ended. Now, for the following year, we couldn't abate any more bond and interest money. Okay, and we didn't. So not only, so the bond and interest is going away, all right, but that extra money that we actually abated to you now basically goes back into our operating expenses, and so we did actually levy for that. So that was a big driver, the year-over-year increase. If you look at your taxes over the last three or four years, though, it's been fairly stable.
Correct, and assessments also did go up this year, which may be a factor, too.
You assess them on the homes, yes?
Yes.
It's a factor. But the assessment, it still gets down to spending.
Right.
Okay, so I don't even want to get, because that's why I asked what yours went up, because I know in cases where some of the people on the boards went down, mine went up 10%.
And others, and other people went down.
The whole assessment thing has any individual taxpayers thing really kind of weird, in my opinion.
Pat, but the mentality is not, when it's publicized and talked about the surpluses in this school district, the mentality is, they shouldn't go up, they should come down, and that money that's setting as a $90 million surplus, or an 80 million, or whatever you want to call it, is an overtaxation of the taxpayer, and we want it back.
Okay, well, we're making decisions every, every month and every year to do the best we can, including giving some back, so, you know.
But the mentality is not that taxes are going to go up.
The mentality, I'm going to tell you what the mentality is. You're exactly correct. The mentality is not to use the surplus money to fund ongoing operating expenses. It is a policy of this board... It is a policy of this board, it will continue to be the policy of this board as long as I'm here and I can convince these guys that that's what we're gonna do, because that would be a big mistake.
It's not sustainable.
That sets us up for an unsustainable failure at some point down the road.
I understand.
So, short of a catastrophic event in Springfield, which is even more likely to happen, okay, we just don't want to do that. So that has been our philosophy, okay? We were very comfortable, for the most part, abating back the bond and interest money because those expenses we knew would not continue in the years after we paid off all the bonds, okay? And it was for that reason we said, you know what? That's money we should not take, that is money that we can take out of surplus, and that's exactly what we did.
Am I correct to say that if I took the total planned budget?
By the way, you're using up the three minutes for you and every one of the people on your team.
I know, I know, sorry. You're next. If I took the budget submitted for next year, divided it by the headcount in the school, is that my cost per student to the taxpayer?
It is not the official cost that the state would calculate.
Pretty close.
But it would be the number that I personally have calculated, yes.
Yes, and how much is that?
But you have to do me one favor, the budget that you will see tonight, okay, is not the final budget.
Okay.
Okay, so if you would do me a favor and you want to do that calculation?
I'll do it all the way.
Until after we approve the budget in August, including any and all input you want to provide between January eighteenth and the middle of August, that's fine. I don't want anybody calculating based on tonight's budget, because we have not reviewed tonight's budget. Okay?
Okay.
And just to put it in perspective, this time last year, when we got into these discussions, we actually cut what was proposed by a million and a half.
Lots of pimp, one hundred. You know, a million and a half on an eighty-eight million dollar budget?
A million and a half dollars is not insignificant. Trust me.
Hey, it's a taxpayer, every million dollars counts.
Always better than you.
Okay.
One last addition, Pat, before we move on. And just so Jerry and the rest of the public is aware, we are doing, we're gonna be working with Dr. Caserta and doing an updated demographic study, because we have, District Seventy-three is experiencing significant growth, and there is some further development that's gonna go into Vernon Hills, and Libertyville is also, at least two areas, they're gonna develop more residential housing. So we know that there's a spike in the pipeline coming up, just based on the numbers that they're dealing with at District Seventy-three now. We're doing demographic studies, so we have a handle on the projections of what those numbers look like, and we'll probably be updating that every year, given the dynamics of kind of what looks like some of the development that's gonna be happening in both of our large.
Will that be published in the newspaper?
What's that?
Will that be published? That type of study that says?
Well, I say.
Here's it. Will it be published? I don't know whether it will be published, because I don't tell Russell when he should and shouldn't come, okay? I mean, I would say it will be reviewed in public, and anybody that attends is gonna be completely briefed on what we learn, and if it happens to be a night that somebody wants to write about it, that's fine. I mean.
When's the last time you was here?
I don't recall. It's been a while. Okay.
We can't control that.
Yeah. Okay, is there anybody else from the public? Are you about thirty seconds away? Anybody else? Okay, all right, so January eighteenth, or July eighteenth, January eighteenth, you can come as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the consent vote agenda is listed, we reviewed it earlier tonight, if I can ask for a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All right, not real call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Motion carries. Program and Personnel Chair, Person Mauer.
Okay, we first have the D-128 extracurricular code of conduct, and we got copies of that tonight. There are basically two changes. The first is in addition to the Policy Section under Number Three for Hosting, and they added in that students who host parties with alcohol or illegal substances are also subject to disciplinary action, whether or not they've consumed anything like that, but just for hosting and providing those things, they can be subject to disciplinary procedures. And then the second change, which is outlined on several pages, it's the same change, it moves us from a one chance and you're kind of out, and then a child petitions to return to the sport or activity if they're caught doing something like this. And it changes from that type of procedure to they get two chances, and the consequence is missing a certain percentage of their season or activity cycle. And it's just a little bit more in line with what other districts do, and it relies on some more than just education of drugs or alcohol, but maybe some kind of counseling also is required. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the changes as presented tonight.
I move to approve the changes as you just described them.
Second. Any discussion? Not real call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item, Board Policies. We have six board policies in front of us, the second reading and adoption, no changes to these have been made since we discussed them last month. So we're looking for a motion to approve the board policies as presented with changes.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Okay, second item on the agenda is the resolution to include compensation paid under an IRC Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings. And this is an adjustment in the way we calculate, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund calculates our earning.
All right, this is just a continuation of the practice that is currently in place to recognize any contributions by an employee to a Section 125 Plan to be counted as IMRF earnings. So this is required by IMRF, and once you approve it tonight, you apply.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to include compensation paid under IRC Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings.
Second. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, roll call, please. Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Okay, second item on the agenda is the resolution to include compensation paid under IRC Section 125 Plan as IMRF earnings. Second. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, roll call, please. Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Item C is the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, and we have discussed eight million dollars in funds from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund for use for capital projects. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion or comments? We went over this twice already today. All right, do we have a roll call, please? Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes. Item C is the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, and we have discussed eight million dollars in funds from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund for use for capital projects. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion or comments? We went over this twice already today. All right, do we have a roll call, please? Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batson.
we will know that we're going to at least have that funding at the start of the school year, if not sometime during the school year.
So, yeah, just for the public.
Right, so the budget calendar for fiscal year 2016-17, which starts July 1 of 2017, the discussions and planning for the budget has already been placed. A tentative budget has been worked internally, which is our working document at our end. We ask tonight that you approve the calendar for the budget hearing, and the date for the public hearing is August 8, 2016. There's a resolution for you to approve tonight. During the next two months, the board and the administration will be working closely to set the final budget for 2017, and to address any issues or concerns that you or the citizens of this community might have, so that we can address those to your satisfaction.
So, the key dates are tonight approving the working and setting the rest of the timeline. The July 8th through August 8th will be a 30-day inspection time, so the budget will be available for the public to view and to review. There'll be meetings July 18th and July 25th. 18th is a special budget discussion meeting for that sole purpose. The 25th is our normal Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, where we will have further discussion. July 25th is also another school board night, so it's next month's school board, so there'll be an opportunity again to address the board if desired. In August, the public hearing is on the 8th of August, and then August 22nd is the day that we will be, that we're scheduled to vote on the budget for this next discipline. So, just to make sure that's all clear.
The January 18th means not on...
No, January 18th.
July 18th.
It is not on here, but it will be published, and so...
Is this going to get posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So, right now, we need a motion for the FY17 Tentative Budget and Budget Calendar approval.
I make a motion that we approve the 2017 working budget and budget calendar, so that we can continue to pay bills.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so here's my question. So, yes, if we're at 2.7% increase, and we had said that we're going to live with the teacher contract and try to hold everything else to inflation.
Yes.
Right, what was our inflation assumption?
My inflation was under 1%.
Okay, and so what's the gap between if you had hit that expectation and this in terms of money? Do you have any?
And I don't want to throw a number out there, but I could have that for you.
I think that'd be part of our discussion.
Yeah, if we could actually, when we start the conversation, let's just start, all right, let's assume that our, firm up the inflation assumption, because it's whatever the CPI number is, right? So, we know what that fact is, okay? And then, we look at the total budget, we look at what we already are committed to in the teacher contract, okay? And then, if there's any other contracts that we're committed to, we would throw that in, all right? And then, all the rest has to hit the inflation assumption, that's where we start, and then we compare that number to whatever you're proposing.
Because the way I think, yeah, well, and the way I think about it, that's like fixed.
All right.
Yeah. And the rest, to me, is more variable, or at least, if we choose, there's control over the other items.
Right.
Fair?
Yeah.
And then one other piece we've talked about several times along with that conversation is as we come back from the abatements, as we start that process up, that we might need to use some reserves to help carry us for a year or two as part of the 2.9 million dollar reduction that we did this year. So, we had that conversation the last time we, every time that we've talked about the budget, just to keep that on that table.
But I'm not sure I ever really understood that one, though, because if you're, so what you're suggesting is, I don't be surprised if the budget is a deficit budget.
It will be a deficit budget, because we do have that.
I never understood that, how we're ever going to catch that up.
You will not be able to, and based on the current CPI.
That's what I understood.
CPI adjustments.
The whole theory of carrying us a couple of years puts us right into where we said we don't want to be, we're just using the reserve.
Because I don't understand where a couple of years ends.
Right.
We don't know. 2017, when you signed contracts.
Right, yeah, that's it.
So, again, let's just, we're going to look at what you propose relative to what we asked you to do, okay? And then we start to go from there, okay?
There's also key to mention here again, that once again, we have $3 million in the budget for the improvements that we are constantly making to our buildings. Those are, we do not have a funding source.
Okay, then let me clarify, well, no, they do have a funding source, that's normal stuff.
It is, but it is sort of a discretionary item, but we wanted to maintain our buildings rather than have them just, you know...
Well, but the discretion is, yeah, we have to put those in the budget, because you, you know, you're right, that's, to me, that's normal stuff, right? You replace roofs, you fix plumbing, you do all that kind of stuff, okay? What's not normal is you build pools, you build gyms. Okay, so let's make sure there's no...
Or fund programs. I mean, I mean, it should be normal, but those are all, those are all trade-offs we're going to have to make.
But let's make sure we don't put in the money for pools and gyms and all that kind of stuff, because that just gets us totally confused.
That would not be part of it.
We'll put in all the other stuff, because that is normal stuff, okay? When we get to the point where we say we got to cut something, then frankly, that stuff's on the table. Okay? We may choose not to do it, or we may choose to do it, we may realize we really shouldn't cut it, because that's not smart, but we'll make that decision for the right reasons, but worse comes to worse, we know that, okay, as much as you hate to, maybe you do have to push it out a year or so. Okay? Makes sense? Anybody else?
We still need a roll call on this one, right?
We do.
So, this is a roll call on the Tentative Budget and Budget Calendar.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
And more on the budget, we need a resolution calling for the public hearing.
Quick notes before we jump to the next one. It's been noticed that the 8 million we said we would transfer, you actually look at the document in our packet online?
Yeah, different number.
Says 10 million.
Yeah, we talked about it in committee, and it's just a chance.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, that's a good catch.
So, Item D, or Item E, I should say, we need a resolution calling for a public hearing. This will be the official public hearing of our budget on August 8th. So, we need a motion and a second for that one.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion, comments? It's all part of the schedule here. Okay, do we have a roll call?
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item F, this is an extension on a real estate contract that we discussed earlier in committee, extending the lease of a garage space at 933 West Park until the end of September. We need a motion and a second for that.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the real estate contract for garage.
Second.
Any other questions or comments on this one? We have a roll call, please.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye. And last on the Facilities and Finance is the emergency repair for the VHS pool filter.
I make a motion that we move forward with the emergency repair of Vernon Hills' pool filter.
Second.
Any further discussion? This was discussed earlier in committee.
What was the total estimate?
130.
Presently, for the equipment, for the, due to the lead time for the equipment, controller, for that part of the project, $135,660.
So, that doesn't include the insulation, Stephen, they got to come back and bid that?
So, we'll see about that next month. Any other questions or comments on that one? We have a roll call, please.
Gruddy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Bunstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Batsen.
Aye.
Delly Polly.
Aye.
And I have no other, so that concludes the Facilities and Finance.
Thanks enough, and now, partner, the seat.
This month was the meeting that discussed the proposed budget overview, and they are, if you remember, we've talked about this, they are going to do a new funding structure where they're going to have students at three different levels based on need of convention, I guess is a way to put it. So, the lower the need, the higher the tuition, and basically, encouraging, most schools have done already